Okay, I show 5:30. So we're gonna go ahead and get started. This is our October study session. This is the opportunity that the board has to take deeper dives into some of the topics that the district is working on. I'm gonna go ahead and get started with roll call. Director Barrows.
Here.
Director Decker.
Here.
Director Smith.
Here.
Director Swala.
Here.
And I'm also here. So I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Snell to take us through the agenda.
Thank you and welcome to our study session. Hard to believe that we're at the end of October here. We have a number of topics with the goal tonight is to allow the board directors to go a little deeper with staff to get some information and to have some question and answer and some feedback. So tonight, our items, so we're gonna continue the conversation related to the new elementary school VITA. We're gonna look at three aspects of student learning. Following up last conversation around curriculum review and access, last time you looked at it from a staff lens. Tonight, we're gonna share some information from a public access lens. We're gonna have information about dual language tonight. And we're also gonna have information about dual credit. So a couple of duels on the agenda. And then finally, just the update related to the pandemic. But that will be short and as we've had that weekly. So really wanna spend the time on items one through four tonight. And the presenters have some content that they're gonna share. And then after each one, we'll have Q and A and follow up. So I think, are there any board questions? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So I'm gonna go to the next slide and I'm gonna turn it over to Jennifer Fleischman.
Well, you can tell I'm out of practice with Zoom. I apologize. This is what happens. I'm glad to be back with you tonight and excited to share some of the options that we have to talk about. But as you all know, we're ready to open in fall of 2022. We've had the enrollment fluctuation due to the pandemic. We're working on the equity policy and the direction of which way that's gonna go. Just at the same time, we are also getting ready to open some of our schools. So the timing is great with some of the things we hope to accomplish. And then you know that Ruth Bader Ginsburg is delayed just due to kind of all of the supplies in the pipelines with the pandemic. And then at some point, we'll be doing the boundary review process. Hopefully, we'll be doing both of those at the same time, which would be ideal. And then just talking more about the Learning Lab School for VITA. So looking forward to that. Next slide, please. As I've shared before, the district demographer had projected with the redevelopment of downtown and the waterfront that we would have around 4,200 additional living units would be constructed in the next few years. And the forecast also showed that Vancouver would have approximately 2,600 students that were under housed within Vancouver Public Schools' boundaries by 2027. And we also know that the pandemic has created very uncertain enrollment projections for us. And just as it relates to VITA, because of that situation and uncertainty, it's also created some less, much less urgency in the need for for that space. Next slide. So what we're looking at, kind of the next phase we're looking at is that all second through fifth grade teachers, which is upwards of about 500, would be able to participate and learn from one another by increasing our systemic capacity within our district to serve all 24 of our elementary schools to integrate this new project, new learning as a system, project-based learning into their classrooms. So all second through fifth grade students within the district would have the opportunity to experience VITA. They would be able to participate in project-based learning and complete a meaning, meaningful and culminating project to share with their family. That would be at the conclusion. And we're really hoping that we're out of COVID, so we can do something that's in-person and tangible for students and families to see those live experiences with kids that are so powerful. We have over 6,100 VPS elementary students that would be approximately able to participate in the Learning Lab experience. We're proposing this is phase one for next year, 2022, excuse me, boy, this, I feel really old, 2022 and 2023. And next year, we are gonna have some considerations for a phase two in regards to a K1 experience, perhaps beginning in January for our younger students. That gives them an opportunity to also get established in school, get those routines underway and be situated with their teacher before we would have some kind of a Learning Lab opportunity for them. But we're hoping to look at that as well.
And Jennifer, just to clarify, this is January 2023, correct? The next school year that you would think about that, not the following school year?
Let's see, 2020, 22, 23 is next year. So it'd be, it would be the following, it would be 24.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So that would give us a year under or a half a year under our belt for the following year. And then our students, our kinders to participate in first grade in some sort of capacity. And we're, we're kind of noodling through that. Next slide, please. So what we're, what we're hoping to do and really looking forward to doing is that all of our teachers can participate in job-embedded learning labs. And basically, it's a structure where they can engage in their own learning through the teaching experience. And then teams of teachers in great engage in learning about and trying instructional activities, methodologies in a classroom setting with students. They also, the collaborative portion of the PD is central to the design of the Learning Lab model. And I won't go into great detail about the four, four different phases. But there are four specific phases that we would be working through. And there's a specific methodology that we're looking to follow their strategy from the University of Washington. Next slide. So just the previous options that we've looked at, we've to talk through those again, we've looked at the K3 options, pros and cons. So the pros of that was that all K3 students could get two weeks of a full project-based learning experience. Fourth grade students would not participate as they're less likely to move schools in fifth grade. That's what we were talking about at that time. Then we also looked at K4 as an option with pros and cons. And third and fourth would get a five to nine day session. And K2 would have only five days to go to VITA. And really, the reason we have these sheer numbers is because of capacity. And as you all know, our K1 enrollment numbers are significantly lower than our three, four, or five numbers. So that's, we're working through those numbers to configure these spaces for our kiddos. And then finally, the two, five option, pros and cons. The pros are, is that we would be able to provide second and third grade students with an eight to 10 day project-based learning experience. Consideration for holidays are built into that. So you know, might be shortened here or there depending. And then fourth and fifth grade would have some type of a hybrid model. And that's really just simply due to the capacity. Five days at VITA and five days at their homeschool in a hybrid model. That's wasn't initially, you know, that's not ideal what we wanted. But there also are most technology savvy kiddos. They, they know how to use those iPads. They know how to do synchronous, asynchronous. And I think we can still accomplish the same, some of the same things that we were hoping to accomplish to have them on site this way. But it does allow the two-week experience.
Just to clarify, because these terms hybrid mean a whole lot different now than they did in the past. This is, we're not talking about hybrid at home and home school means a lot different too. So homeschool means their boundary schools that they attend, not doing this at home. So just wanna make sure that's clear.
Thank you, Jeff. Yes. In COVID, we have certainly changed frequently. And
So the last time we came together, we talked about this idea and Jennifer had presented a couple of options and there was some board discussion about the grade level bands that we could serve. And so we came back and went to the drawing board and spent some time looking at the numbers and crunching, well, how many days could we actually do for each of these grade level bands? I think some of the discussion points that you brought up last time was about K1 and just needing some time in their, in their neighborhood school to kind of understand routines and processes. And that early on in the year in particular, it might be difficult for them to go to a different school for five to 10 days. And so we took that feedback and kind of pushed it more towards the second through fifth grade option. We also liked some of the discussion that you had about, well, what could they do at their homeschool? And so that's, that's where some of this hybrid came in to play to try to get second through fifth through, but being creative about what's done at VITA and what might be follow-up projects that we could support teachers in the classroom with. Of course, we haven't built the project yet. There's ideas and we would want you all to weigh in on that. So it's kind of like trying to get some of these logistics set from the board and then kind of going with the creativity, how to make that happen. So I think this is a good place to maybe pause and see if there are questions, discussion points. And Jennifer and I will try to respond accordingly.
And you would have feedback so far?
I have a couple of questions. I wanna go back to that. Jeff, you had clarified it about when the kinder in first grades would be phased into this. Because this two to five option is, that's just this whole 22, 23 school year. And it is the K1 coming in in January 24, which is after, because if we do this next year, the following year, we're potentially looking at being, you know, the K5, you know, either magnet or neighborhood combination school. So would we have K1 starting that fall of 23 then? Or are they not even going to phase in until? I guess I'm, I guess that's what I would like some clarification on.
Sure. So I think the thinking is, there were a couple of things is, we wanted those teachers and those students to also experience VITA. So what we'll have to look at after we get phase one completed and planned is, what is our capacity with extra space that we have with the codes that we have to comply with and so forth on what we can serve to do a similar model for those students. It would be truncated. It wouldn't be longer probably than a week. So that's, that's gonna be our next focus is what, what is our capacity? How could we serve them? We would have with just one week and such a smaller amount, but we don't know what our enrollment will be. But it's conceivable that we would have the capacity to do something along those lines.
Okay, so that would be in addition to having perhaps kinder and first graders that are attending there full-time.
Correct.
Because that following year, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, that's what I was, I was trying to figure out if we were not going to have kinder and first graders like starting in the fall of 2023, if that's what that meant. So.
No. And, and to all of you too, as we're going through this process, if you have questions or anything that comes up or anything to share, because things like visiting schools perhaps where you might know someone that works, that's a similar type of school, anything along those lines. Please let me know or reach out, give me a call, email me, whatever, and I'm happy to, to respond. Because we're, we're just engaging in the pre-planning process. So that's perfect timing.
And then I had another question about the kind of hybrid model that the fourth and fifth graders would be going into. So because, you know, half of them would be at VITA and then half of them would be at their neighborhood school, which I'm glad you clarified, because I saw homeschool and I got a little nervous. But so they'll be at their neighborhood school. So then will the four to five teachers only be doing it half the time too? Or will all of the teachers, four and five be with half of the students? And then there's some other model or some other method for? I mean, I'm just wondering if those four to, four to fifth grade teachers are also going to have a hybrid model.
They, I think we would, we would need to, once we get direction from you all about the grade level bands, we would need to work through that to better understand. Now, if, you know, if the students are only at VITA five days supervised by that staff, then obviously, when they're back at their neighborhood school, they're gonna need to be supervised by their own teacher. So it's gonna look a little different. But we will need to get the logistical kind of direction from the board. And then we can start refining those and getting you more prescriptive plans. So one of the documents that Jennifer put together with the planning team was like an actual schedule for each of these options that has, you know, each school, each grade level, when they would come in, what that would look like. But we also don't wanna get ahead of ourselves with this. And we wanna make sure that we understand this is the direction you would like us to go and then come back to you with those plans. And include you in the brainstorming process as well. I think, you know, individually, if you wanted to talk with Jennifer about some of those ideas and, you know, opportunities and concerns that we would wanna do that.
I'm gonna jump in, since there's a pause here. I appreciate that you expanded the options. I've been thinking about this over the weekend and I think fifth grade is a transition year to middle school. And I think there, when you go from one classroom teacher in fifth grade to having seven teachers, seven periods a day, you no longer have that person that is drawing those interdisciplinary connections. So I actually think this is a really amazing opportunity for fifth graders to learn how to connect those different subjects and how science and social studies all works together in one project. So I know that fifth graders wouldn't necessarily be candidates for VITA in 23, 24. But maybe this would spark an interest in ITAC or, you know, it, it will support their learning as they transition to middle school. So I, I support the second through fifth option. And if there's creative ways to do, you know, an extended project with the kinders and first graders next year at their homeschool, you know, in their pods, doing something interdisciplinary. You know, it's fun to watch the younger students because they're moving around and they're doing so many things. And I think they would absolutely benefit from a longer-term project. I also would say, I think that the, there's so much experience in our, in our teaching team in the fourth and fifth grade of already doing these longer-term projects, like I think back to the BizTown experience that many schools participate in. And there's preparation beforehand, they go onsite, then there's, there's kind of reflection after the fact. So I think that this follows that pattern of some pre-work. You're diving in and then afterwards, you're kind of connecting all those lessons. Anyway, so I really support that option, but I would encourage if, if we have the bandwidth to come up with some projects that the kinders and first graders can do in their homeschool. Anyone else have thoughts?
Um, I also agree with the second through fifth grade. But I did, Jeff, have a kind of a question. So going back to the K1 to 2024, is the purpose for kindergarten and first grade? So I guess, how can I say this? So the year that we're doing this is 2022 to 2023. So then those kindergarten and the first graders would then be first graders, second graders in 2024. So wouldn't, I guess my question is, since they didn't get to participate, wouldn't it be better, I guess, for them to be part of the phase two, the first and second graders, since they didn't get to participate in this previous year? I don't know if that, does that question make sense?
So you're saying that the second, that what would be the second graders in the fall of 2023 would have missed out on an opportunity?
I guess, I guess I just, I feel like if we go to from phase two, then we would have a whole class of first graders who would not have had the opportunity to go to, to go to
As second graders, they would be second, if they were first graders.
Yeah.
I thought of that too, although it is kind of hard to
I guess, I guess what, if what we're trying to do is for that 2020, 23 class per se, like the K through five class to participate in VITA, then that's, I guess that's just my question. If the purpose is for that whole class to participate in VITA or just, if we're just looking at grade level.
What I'm hearing from the board is that you would like K5 to be able to participate in some form, even if it's not at VITA, but some sort of a project that they might be able to do at their homeschool. That's, that's what I'm hearing from the board. And so I just wanna check in with you. I think the 24, 2024 is something that we just need to talk a little bit more about. Like, I think that's maybe confusing the issue right now. So we probably shouldn't have raised that at this point. What we need is 2022, 2023. I'm hearing I want, you want K5 and you're comfortable with second through five, having an in-person experience and looking at K1 as some sort of creative way of bringing them into the experience. So I wanna check in if that's accurate.
That is, I'm feeling that way too. I, when Sandra brought it up last time, I'm like, oh my gosh, I can't even imagine. She's right. I can't even imagine how we would get kinders to like know how to get their lunch at a new school and how that, and they're just finally learned how to walk in the halls of their own school. So it really, they would miss out on so much going. They wouldn't be able to fully in, fully take in all of the things that VITA had to offer at that point. But to allow our second through fifth graders, I think it's a great opportunity.
Wendy, did you have anything? I'm not putting anyone on the spot. Just wanna make sure everyone had a chance.
No, I, I, I'm strong, I mean, I absolutely support the, the second through fifth grade, the plan for the second through fifth graders. I agree with what Kathy, I didn't even think about kindergarters at lunch. I think that's a valid point, Kathy. I think that this is just such an amazing opportunity to introduce project-based learning to all of our, our, our K through five staff, if we can find opportunities to bring that, that training to our, our teachers and the experience to our students, whether it's within the halls of VITA or at their homeschools. I think that would, that would be fantastic. Second through fifth makes sense to me. I'm totally supportive of that, of that decision. I don't know that I have anything additional, but I do have one question that's kind of in the back of my mind and it's kind of getting into the weeds. So I don't need necessarily need an answer right now, but I'm just thinking forward to bringing the, the students into the, to VITA for two weeks at a time. And I'm just thinking of like our, our special ed, special needs students and how we're gonna provide those supports for them while they're not at their homeschool. Especially like SLPs and OTPTs and that kind of stuff. Like I said, it's just kind of in the back of my head, not necessarily a question I need answered right now, but it might be something I'd be interested in hearing in the future.
It's a really great question and one that we, as we uncover, you know, once we've identified this model, we can start doing the logistics on it and then try to figure out what those services look like. Jen's done a great job of thinking through the different staff that would be needed to support that. A lot of it also depends on the project and, and what activities are being done in that project. Because as we know, some students need a little more support in certain kinds of activities than others. And so it's, I think what we're really excited about is the opportunity to do this in a lab school and really try some things out and be creative with that. So what I'm hearing is on the top one is that you're thinking that, I think that we have consensus around second through fifth and that, that allows us to start working on some of these other things. So the transportation logistics and the puzzle of that, the staffing at VITA. And Jen's identified the classroom teachers that will be needed for sure. And then to your point, Wendy, the other staff and how that blends in. And then thinking about just our existing coaching staff and how do we integrate them into this experience? And then I love the question that, and just as an example, we want the team to come up with this, but Jen put down here, how can we as historians uncover and share stories about our community? And so you can just, your wheels probably start turning on what, what that could look like. So we're excited to get going on this. Any other questions for Jennifer or myself regarding this item?
Okay. Thank you so much. This is exciting.
Thank you, Jennifer. And just to be clear again, because we talked a lot about dates and stuff. This is a one-year lab school and then we would align this with Ruth Bader Ginsburg and the boundary revision process. And then we would launch VITA. So, okay. So the next item, I'm gonna invite Mr. Bill Omen and Darcy Frank to share a little about the curriculum review and public access part of our agenda item tonight. So Bill.
Sorry about that. Had some camera issues. Good evening, board. It's great to see everybody. So last, last week, Darcy and I presented the Teacher Facing Hub, which was a resource that we wanted to get in front of and share that, that tool and resource. And today, we're gonna come before you and share some work that Darcy and her team in collaboration with our communications team has put together regarding the public-facing website. And so she's going to walk you through some screenshots at this point and kind of get into some of the specifics. And then I will be following up, sending you each the link. So you can take a look and give us some additional feedback. So with that said, I will turn it over to Darcy.
Thanks, Bill. Good evening, everybody. So yeah, so what we wanted to do is we wanted to give you a good idea of the information that we will be putting up on the website regarding the wellness screener, the panorama screener and our second step curriculum. So the screenshots are examples of what our community and parents will be seeing when they log in. So this is, you know, just what is social emotional learning and why it matters. Next slide, please. And then there's the opportunity to see some frequently asked questions and to take a look at the screener so that folks can see the questions that are on the screener, both the 3.5 and the 6.12. And then the opportunity to opt out of the screener. So we wanted those to be easily accessible. And we wanted to make sure that folks had an idea of what's covered by the survey. So there are questions regarding self-management, the student's perception of a growth mindset, their self-awareness, and then relationships at school. And then the results will provide us with a high-level picture of social emotional learning to help us meet the Washington State social emotional learning standards. And then, and we've got a copy of those a little bit later. And then school staff will also be able to use the data to better understand students' experiences at school and provide supports. Next slide, please. And we wanted to make sure that folks had the opportunity to have a little bit of an explanation about growth mindset, goal-setting, kind of what that is, managing emotions, the emphasis on empathy and kindness and on problem-solving for the second step curriculum. So moving in from the survey to the actual curriculum and what that includes. So we wanted to give a good curriculum and what that, um, includes. So we wanted to give a good sampling of what's covered in the second step curriculum, which is our K eight, um, curriculum. All right, next slide, please, or next slide, please. And then, um, a little explanation, um, about how the lessons are taught. So there's one lesson a week and then depending on the building and how much time is set aside each day, then there are additional activities and things that are, um, included. And the CNI team is actually working to provide teachers with, uh, additional ideas and activities and support during that time as well to enhance, um, the second step lessons. And then we've included, um, some lesson previews, so, um, folks can go in and see the lesson, the lesson plan, um, and have, you know, some good examples about what those lessons look like. So next slide, please. Um, and then we wanted to also share with you the, um, page on health and physical education. So again, some frequently asked questions and just a little kind of explanation, um, about the, uh, the program. Next slide, please. So the content areas, we thought it was important to share a little snippet of information about the different content areas. And then, um, with the social and emotional health, um, lessons, there's a button so that you can learn more and get a little, you know, better idea. And then for the sexual health, um, there's an opportunity to actually view lessons. And so that, uh, link is there as well. Next slide, please. And then this just gives, um, a little more information around, um, the different, the, the programs, the, um, the goals for our elementary students, our middle school students and our high school students. So we thought it would be good for folks to be able to see that overview. And next slide, please. And then again, some, uh, frequently asked questions. So specific information on each of these areas that, uh, folks might kind of be wondering about. So that is, uh, just kind of a, a quick overview of the information that we've included.
Thank you, Darcy. I really appreciate you walking us through that. Uh, as Bill said, we want to provide you with the live links so that you can click around and, and drill down as deep as you want. Um, it's not actually, um, on the website yet. We're, we're bringing it to you first and then, um, we would welcome your feedback. So Bill will follow up with that email and then, um, with a time period, just to, you know, within the next five days or something, trying to, um, give us your feedback. Um, and we continue to look at it and, uh, try to make sure that, uh, we've got everything, um, is in as accessible as way as possible. And then also recognizing, I think you talked about last time, just languages and accessibility. And so just continuing to add, um, to the inventory as, as we get something up there. So any questions or comments for Darcy or Bill or myself?
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I, I know I voiced this last time, but I am so impressed. This is absolutely wonderful. And I know as time goes on, there'll be things that we discover that you need to add or you reword or whatever. Once it goes live, there'll always be those little, but, um, as, having been a parent and wanting to know, so what exactly are you covering in this field? Besides the solitudes that you get in the high school and middle school classes, it's just nice to be able to go look. I, I never thought that there was anything very going on, but I always wanted to, you know, just be able to support my child. And, uh, it's just a wonderful opportunity to have parents who want to be in the know, be able to access, access the information. But thank you so much. It's such, that's tons of hard work. So thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. And just, I forgot to mention that we will be following up. As you said, this is a work in progress. So we'll be following up with our other content areas as well, doing the same thing so that we can provide information on our reading and our math and, you know, our science programs and things like that. So we'll continue the work.
That was my question is kind of if the plans are to really have this be across all of our curriculum or whether it's more just the, um, the ones that parents commonly want access to, which I mean, the SEL, the Sexual Health Ed, those are kind of those. Um, you know, so even like math, history, all that stuff, that's, that's the plan is to get all of that up. Okay. And I know you said it isn't live yet, but is there like a target date for when you want it to go live or is that kind of, are you waiting for our feedback?
Yeah, I think we wanted to present to you, um, Billy, I'm sorry, you were gonna say something too.
No, that, that's okay. I didn't mean to interrupt. Yeah, we, we will be, uh, sending that out with, uh, like Jeff said, just, we'd like to get the feedback within a few days, because the panorama window will be starting, uh, once we hit November.
I think it's great. I, I'm, I really appreciate, I think, especially because, I mean, I loved the teacher-facing one, but I think the public-facing one too, because I know there are a lot of parents that want access to this information. Um, so I appreciate the transparency, uh, that you guys are putting out there.
Thank you.
So I wrote down a couple of notes and I have specific questions, but I wonder if I should save that for the feedback email. Um, is there a preference? Okay. Well, I was, um, I think knowing the impetus of this, of course, is that we want to provide transparent access to parents. And so that's important, but we also know that there has been some confusion and misinformation about some of the programs that we're offering. I just noticed a couple of details potentially we could add just for clarification. Um, when you, there was a slide that talked specifically about meeting Washington standards. It might be good, Darcy, as you spoke, you said Washington social emotional learning standards. And I wonder if referencing the new legislation from Washington, which is the reason why we're, we're committed to a new SEL curriculum. Of course, we all recognize the importance of SEL. Um, I wonder if that would be an addition to just help anchor in why this work is it's a legal requirement in addition to it being important. Um, on the, um, comprehensive sex education, um, I know that as, as an experienced parent, I know that there's also a lot of information that goes out to fourth grade and up with information specific to the curriculum. And I think that there's a lot of good opportunities that you get access to the curriculum. You have access to opt out. And I think mentioning that could be important on this tool. So as your child enters the grade band that is within CSC, uh, parents are directly communicated by, you know, the teachers with information opting out. Um, just to kind of close that gap in terms of nothing's going to be shared without parents kind of involvement or notification. Um, one other question, not saying, I just wonder if it's worthy of mentioning that our CSC curriculum has not actually changed. There's nothing new to it. Um, and then lastly, and I don't know what the right format is for this, but is as we complete this, is it, would there be value in a feedback tool? So as parents are reviewing and interacting with the curriculum, um, would it be an option to have like a quick survey or a quick feedback form that they could fill out if they have concerns on a specific area or more information they'd like to know? I'll save the rest for the email feedback, but those were my initial thoughts. Thank you for all the work, because I think this is, this is going to, I think, calm a lot of concern, because we know there's a lot of misinformation going around and our sex education curriculum has not changed and we have added social emotional learning just to better support the needs of our students, which is such important work. And parents, of course, always have the option to opt out what they're uncomfortable with. Anyone else? Okay. Well, we will look for the email and provide more feedback, um, as it, as it occurs to us. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Darcy. Thank you, Bill. And thank you for the feedback board. And, um, that email will come before the weekly update. So don't, you know, it'll come separately from Bill so that it's on your radar, um, not that the weekly update isn't. Uh, I want to make sure that we call that out. Though we'll probably follow it up with the weekly update as well. So you have multiple opportunities to engage. Um, the next part of our program, I'm going to invite, um, Christie and Lucy. And I'll share my screen as you guys are getting going.
Hi again, directors. It's good to see you twice in a row. And I'm here with my partner Lucy, and we're going to sort of tag team this one. And I want to just say a little bit about my own trajectory through education. I started my teaching as a bilingual teacher in Los Angeles and was a dual-language principal in Portland for seven years. So when I had the opportunity to come to Vancouver and knew that the program was looking to grow and expand, I was thrilled. I was even more happy when Jeff assigned me to this work and gave me Lucy to partner with. So I'm really, really happy to be involved in this and help Vancouver take next steps in developing a world-class language program for our kids. I'm probably preaching to the choir, um, in terms of enthusiasm, but I wanted to just kind of set some, I don't know, some norms around how we're thinking about dual language, because part of our work is, is looking to make sure that everybody, administrators, teachers, kids, families, have a really clear idea of what dual language means and what we're after in, in offering this opportunity for our kids. So we're trying to promote bilingualism, bili literacy, grade-level academic achievement and cross-cultural competence in all students. Research shows that when kids go through a dual-language program, they exit by sixth, seventh grade, they don't exit, but their, um, trajectory, academic trajectory surpasses that of a monolingual child in terms of academic achievement and even brain development. So it's, it's an amazing opportunity. I think for us, one of the most exciting pieces to me is that it ties in so well with our equity policy as we're really taking a large part of our community, our Spanish-speaking Latino families, and elevating their language, their culture, their traditions, and inviting other people into it. But it's an additive program where we're taking families where they are, kids who speak Spanish in particular. We have our Mandarin program also, but it's got a little bit different of an angle in terms of instruction. And we're inviting other people to join us in elevating Spanish and becoming bilingual, bili literate. So, um, all this goes to say, we are trying to also meet the superintendent, state superintendent's goal of by 2030 that any family or child that wants a dual-language education would be able to access it with ease in our district. So that means we have quite a bit of work to figure out how that's gonna look. And before we get too far in expanding that, we want to make sure our foundation was super solid. So can I have the next one, please, Jeff? So we have three goals in dual language. We talked about this already, bilingualism and bili literacy. We want high academic achievement in both language, uh, both program languages and socio-cultural competence. That's again, a direct tie to our equity policy. And when we think about how much the world is changing and we really don't know what it's going to look like in 20 years, but we do know that we will have more and more interconnection between countries and cultures and languages. And we want our kids to be out there and feel confident and in the swim of being able to do whatever they, they want to do. One thing that we hear a lot is that dual language is a great way to teach kids English. And that's really not what we're about. We're about teaching, we're about elevating Spanish and ensuring that there is a strong foundation in Spanish for those that enter in Spanish and teaching English along the way. It's not like sacrificing one language for the other. Um, so it, learning English, uh, in a dual-language program is an awesome byproduct and kids often come out of a dual-language program more successfully exiting English language learner status than if they had been an all-English program with English language development only. So that's a good thing to note. Next one.
All right, this one's Lucy's.
Yep, this is me. And hi, everyone. It's good to see you. Um, and, um, thank you for letting me, um, come along. And I am equally as excited, um, I think, working with Christie and her knowledge, and it's just a great team. So we are very fortunate. I would like for you to start though, because, um, like we said, um, dual language is a lever for student equity. And if you could just read the quote and really think about how it resonates with what we're working on, um, in terms of our equity policy and, um, just what stands out to you. So I'll give you just a minute or so to, to read that. And so, um, does anybody, this is a little interactive. Does anybody have anything that resonates with you in terms of this, um, quote from Connor Williams?
Um, I would just say that I, um, that, that last bit about how unless we're really careful about how we're targeting what we're doing in dual language, it does become a magnet program rather than a dual-language dual, you know, a multilingual competency program. And you miss out on half of the reason for doing a dual-language program, which is all the multicultural understanding and the brain building and all of the other things. So, um, that, that has always concerned me about, you know, our dual-language programs that aren't really dual-language, they're more like immersion programs.
Anyone else?
This is a powerful quote. Oh, sorry, Kyle. This is the powerful quote. Thank you for sharing this. I think it, it it's helping, it's helping me just to remember kind of why that equity, why our equity policies and our equity initiatives are so important even for something. I mean, I, I can see how it, how it easily ties together. Um, but I just thank you for sharing this.
So I, I was just gonna add that, you know, as we have engaged in the process of developing a new equity policy, I think it's triggered a lot of light bulbs for me of other, um, policy-level opportunities there are that will trigger based on our equity policy, programs of choice, dual language, and just that it really needs to be established at the policy level in order to ensure that the outcomes and, um, the program itself reflects those equity goals. So I mean, I, I, I think that, that once we finalize the equity policy, there's probably opportunity to really establish a dual-language policy from this, um, and probably opportunity to do programs of choice policies. So, um, I think this is a really good, good quote to anchor us, especially where we are right now.
Wonderful. Um, anybody else? Okay. Um, next slide. So Christie, this is you, but this is our three-year plan and we're just dreaming really big.
Yeah. We, when we first started meeting Lucy and I, we would go to lunch, we would go to the office, we were walking around and we just, we were just like spouting ideas and all these different things that we knew we wanted to, to do and focus on. We finally settled down and got to work and put everything on chart paper and then separated it out into first year, second year, third year plan. And we may need more years, but, uh, these are some of the things that we've really been thinking about. It kind of goes with what you're saying, Kyle, around policy. How do we, some of, some of the technical things I was going to talk about, Lucy's got some other things to talk about, but one of the things we noticed is recruitment and hiring is a really big deal. I mean, it's a big deal for everybody, but it's an especially big deal if you need someone to speak, read, write Spanish to the level that you want all your children in front of them all day long. And Lucy and I have been talking a lot more, this is part of our equity policy also, representation matters. And we want kids to have adults in front of them that look like them, that represent their culture. And so that's, that's an area of growth for us. Um, starting to think and work with HR and how do we attract these candidates and, and retain them as well?
Yes. And along with that, we have been looking and we were discussing, you know, our alignment and consistency across all the schools and the programs. As we grow more programs or we continue to grow more programs, As we grow more programs or we continue to grow more programs, we really need to, to have a systematic approach to, to that and just making sure that we are all on the same page with content allocation, time use in a 90-10 program, which a 90-10 program is the preferred and optimal program from the point of OSPI. And so just looking at how a day would look in the classroom, professional learning for teachers and administrators so that we know that teachers are on the same page and that are there for the same reason and have that passion to teach in a second language, because sometimes dual language teaching is, can be difficult. Teaching is difficult and then adding that other added piece, but really if you are passionate and you are there for the same purpose of what a dual language program is, then it is a lot easier to, to go through the day and and just work through the program. Also, we're just dreaming big about expansion of our programs. What are the best models and how do we create robust school programs in the middle and high school? And how do we offer different programs and classes such as AP classes, AP classes in math and biology? And how do we create those? And there are great models across our country and our nation that have been able to do that. So how can we replicate or how can we work with them to give those offerings to our kids? Our entrance procedures, we really want to look at that piece and look at how we systematize it so that it won't be a big burden on the school itself and that we can have a fair process for how kids are getting into, into schools. And as we move, you know, through the third year plan, the development of our dual language program, a department, we need a department because, you know, there's a lot of work to be done and this is a, a big venture and we just want to be sure that we're doing it, we want to do it correctly and with the appropriate personnel.
One of the things that we're thinking about as we think about expansion is what is the most equitable way to provide a dual language program? Right now we have co-located programs, so there will be half the school is dual language and half is English only. We wanted to explore also, what would it be like in our district to have schools that are solely dual language schools? And have them geographically around the districts so that families have access to them. That would be part of our entrance procedures is how do you get into a dual language school? How do we make it available to anybody who wants it? And how do we, you know, if we have it in one school, would we be able to better funnel resources, focus on language, the, the language of instruction? And not compete for resources. So there's just some, some big thinking we need to do that we'll need to work with you guys on as we dream big and move into the future. I think we're on the next slide.
Um, with dreaming big though, what we need is money, right? And so we applied for an OSPI grant and we were awarded $200,000 to be spent up until June of 2023. So we have two years to spend that. And what we will be really focusing on is a needs assessment and a creation of a master plan, which really does include that policy level as well. And how are we going to work through that? But also the involvement and the communication of our stakeholders. How are they going to help guide this plan? And the, the growth of our program. So we, we really want to work on including all of our stakeholders as we move forward. And the grant will allow us to, to start that piece. We're working with Dr. Katherine Karrison, who's out of, who used to be from Evergreen and now she's consulting alongside OSPI. And she is very knowledgeable and has worked towards, works, worked through a master plan in her own district. And so we're very fortunate to have her with us. And we actually just met with her today, just briefly to start that planning process. We were also able with the grant to hire Dr. Jose Medina and he is an international consultant and a very known consultant in the dual language world. And he, we had a one-hour webinar just to set the foundation of what dual language is and who is it for and just to set that tone and that excitement in our dual language team and teachers. He will be providing a PD, a three-hour PD for administration. It's important that we have our administrators and our department leads and you, if you would like to come, just to hear him speak and so that we can all gain that foundational point and setting. He's very motivational, very exciting, but extremely knowledgeable. And he will also be providing 12 hours of PD for teachers on moving from the foundation to the planning and how does that look in an instructional day? And so that's, that's very exciting as well. Next slide. So we have been working and we've only been working on this for two, two months, but we do have some successes that we'd like to share. We've started mentoring new teachers. We were part of the new teacher training at the beginning of the year. And so we started with that, which is helping teachers, how do you start your year? How do you start your day? How do you plan your day? We've gone into classrooms to help with assessments. How, how do we assess kids and fluency and, and so forth? And so that's been some of the work we've been doing and we've been really working with the new programs at Roosevelt and King, just helping them plan as they are kindergarten first only right now. And we've also again, worked on the alignment of the program. How does the day look? How does the day look across our district and what resources are we using? And that has been a, a good, a good point for all of our programs as we started looking at that. Just great conversation. We have work still to do, of course, but this is, it's not stopping, you know, right now. We've also had a dual language professional development at the beginning of the year with the Center for Bili Literacy and they really focus on bridging across the two languages and content and when it's appropriate and when it's not. So how do we, we, when we said we want children to be bilingual, at what point do we want to bridge across the two languages? And how do we plan for that? Because that is really intentional planning. And, and teachers just need the time to know how to do that and when to do that. So that we don't focus on translating, of course. We have started our district-wide PLCs with dual language teachers. It's once a month. We, next week, we hope to be looking at i-ready data. And what we do is we start off and then we break off in grade level teams from all four schools so that they have the opportunity to, to discuss possibly, you know, i-ready data in Spanish and that you don't, we're not able to do that in the English programs, but really if they can, they have that opportunity to look at the data as a grade level and then as a program. We are looking at our testing and the alignment of our testing. Some of the things that are happening sometimes is we test, we double test and we over test and then we lose time for kids to be in the classroom and then spend, and we lose instructional time. And that's one of the things that we've been looking and discussing with classroom teachers as where can you really optimize the assessments that you are using and where are you repeating assessments and taking kids out of the classroom? One of the fun things about this position is that I've been able to collaborate with many great professionals and really just really intelligent, smart people with great experience. We've started a kind of a connection with Utah and Utah has, is one of the states that has the most dual language programs. And so they have a great network. And then Dual Language of New Mexico, they have, they're the ones who are really responsible for promoting the conference that is well-known called La Cosecha. And so they have a lot of resources, especially how do we look at instruction and how do we help teachers? And how do we help in evaluations? And they have a whole teaching standards in dual language that we are just looking at right now and just discussing. But we are also part of a Washington team through OSPI and where we discuss and we meet once, once a month. What are the issues that we are all confronting in dual language programs and how we support each other and how we give resources to each other? And then we have two, we are working with two centers based out of Washington DC, the Center for Applied Linguistics and the Center for Bili Literacy. And they are just the gurus of dual language and are based with a lot of knowledge and a lot of great resources. But we are also working on collaboration throughout our district with all our district programs. You know, we cannot do this alone. Dual language is interconnected to all of our district programs such as departments, such as ELL, CTE. We have curriculum and instruction and assessment and IT. So that collaboration across districts is really important and it's important to keep that going as well. And we are planning for a dual language transitional kindergarten. We hope that as Superintendent Riedel's vision is actually a pre-K-12 vision. And so we want to really add that and help kids and families really know what dual language is before they get into kindergarten first so that they'll know the commitment also that they're making and that they are really are going to stay within our program as well. Next slide. Are we done? Oh, I, I think that's it. It's really been a pleasure and I know that the work is barely starting, but it's, it's a great, it's a great start. So thank you. Thank you to all of you.
We wondered if anybody had any questions or anything we could help with?
I just want to say that I have been waiting for so long to see the progress that you guys have made so far. Thank you so much. We always knew that there was amazing potential with the dual language program. And it's so exciting to see you two ladies with all of your experience and all your passion around this get to come together to develop, to dream big. I'm just, I'm so thrilled. I'm so excited. This, this is one of the things that I had hoped we could bring together when I ran. So this is where I ran for office. I'm just thrilled. Thank you ladies so much for your passion about this.
Thank you.
I just want to say kudos to both of you for just within two months, you've accomplished a lot. So and then a lot of hard work and I just want to say thank you.
I just want to add. First off, when you said you needed money, that's always a daunting thing as a board member, right? But then you answered the, the call, right? So you found the money yourself. So thank you for that. I think that's really getting us off onto a great start. I really appreciated the work that you've already done. I think my eyes were drawn to repeat, removing repetitive assessments because that's feedback we've heard as board directors quite a bit. And so it, it's just nice that you're tackling some of those quick fixes, but then also have your three-year dream big. And I look forward to just following the work and getting more updates as you go. One, the only question that, and this isn't for an answer tonight, but that just really piqued for me is as, as we build the master plan or as you build the master plan with the help of the consultant, you know, how does that integrate with, and I know Lucy, you touched on it at the end with CTE, ELL, but particularly ELL, because we know the data shows that students in dual language usually track out of the ELL faster. So kind of what's that kind of ultimate integration and incorporation with the ELL services? So that's just something I'm curious about. No expectation of answers tonight.
I'd just say one thing, dual language is in the ELL service. And it's the best service that we can offer ELLs and it has shown the most progress for our ELLs. And so that would be just a quick question, a response to that. I do just want to say one other thing. We also have another team member. We have, we were able to have Atossa and Elsa. Martina Spires is our other helper in this. And yeah, I just want you to hear her name as well.
Thank you. And I should clarify, I, I absolutely agree with what you just said, Lucy. I was just asking, just in terms of as we look at the district umbrella, particularly around fiscal and budgeting, just how the departments kind of interconnect going forward between ELL and dual language, because as you point out, Lucy, dual language really should be a primary ELL service.
Well, thank you, Lucy and Christie. Is there any other comments from board directors? So part of these presentations are kind of, you're, you're getting a sense as a state of the current state and then opportunities for the future. And what we will need to be coming back to you on this topic, on curriculum, on all these things is how do we prioritize this moving forward? And so, and that's also a part of the strategic planning work in the spring. So this is all these threads that you're seeing make the, the overall strand of where we want to go collectively together. So appreciate Lucy and Christie's time this evening and we're going to shift gears to the other dual. So I'm going to share my screen, invite Mark and Brian, and I think Bill's going to introduce this topic as well.
Yeah. Hello again. Thank you, Dr. Snell. So last couple of meetings where we've been together, dual credit has, has, has come up. And so we wanted to bring this back to you and going to start by sharing just some high-level information that kind of defines dual credit in different ways that students can earn dual credit in high school. Give you kind of the state of, of dual credit within our, our system and, and where students are earning dual credits. And then we're going to highlight some different opportunities that we could explore moving forward in the dual credit world. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark Reith, our Director of CTE and Career in College Readiness. And he has with him Dr. Brian Matheson, our Assistant Director of Career in College Readiness. So Mark and Brian.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Omen, and good evening, board and colleagues and friends that are with us tonight. That was a great set you gave us to get us started. And, and I just want to bring initial attention to the title of our slides. So we're going to talk about increasing dual credit access regardless of income or location. So that's kind of setting the stage for what we want to talk about tonight. And, and really this is our first chance to kind of introduce ourselves as the Career in College Readiness newly formed department supported by our EDs and Dr. Snell coming in. I love the vision that we're really talking about combining all of our, our departments that are focused on that post-secondary transition. So in this newly formed or forming department, we have Abbott is a partner with us, Europe is a partner with us. We have all of the dual credit earning programs, which is college and the high school, APIB. We'll talk a little bit more about those. And we're even talking about some of those post-secondary assessment components. So really trying to make sure that all the players that are supporting our students to our vision of all students graduating both career and college ready in support of their high school and beyond plan and really that individualization of that and how we can support that as they transition through. That's where we're really anchoring our work. So as Mr. Omen said, really this is about an overview of dual credit kind of our existing state and then some wonderings about where we might want to focus and be more intentional to really support those plans and access to all our students. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Matheson to introduce himself and get us started.
Good evening, directors. Thank you for this opportunity to address you briefly. And I want to thank Mark for those kind words. We are also very excited about our work and making sure that all students graduate college and/or career ready. And so, yeah, I'm going to spend a little time talking about dual credit programs in general and then kick it over to Mark and we'll do a little back and, back and forth. And I forgot to mention that, yes, I am an Assistant Director of Career in College Readiness in Mark's department. All right. So at a real high level, and you may be aware of this, so we'll kind of brush by this, but dual credit are courses that have the potential, potential being a key word, to earn college credit and high school credit at the same time. So that's how I always remember it. It's dual. It's college and high school at the same time. And potential is key because some of these options are exam-based. So Mark will go into detail as we get there, but for some of these options, students need to perform at a certain score on an exam. Other options are simply by the function of being enrolled and passing the course, students are earning dual credit. So as, as we go into detail, you'll, you'll see the distinctions between the different options. And these are all options that are available in our Vancouver public school system. The only system, the only dual credit option that is not on this list is Cambridge. We, we currently do not offer the Cambridge courses in, in our school system. Next slide. So I would imagine I'm among friends with this information. So I would imagine I'm among friends with this information, but with dual credit, it is very important because the jobs of the future and the jobs that our students will be going into, most of those jobs require some post-secondary high school or training. So often when we think of, of dual credit, we are leaning into four-year college. But that is only part of the story. Students that may be pursuing one and two-year degree programs, certificate programs and readiness programs also benefit greatly from, from dual credit. And we know from the research that students that take dual credit, they have higher graduation rates. They're more likely to grad, to persist in college and they're most likely to complete their degree. And this is at least partly because they are, as a high schooler, exposed to the, the rigor and excitement of a dual credit class. And also most frequently that they're choosing these courses that are in alignment to their high school and beyond plan. So I'm taking classes that I'm excited about, that I see as connected to my future and that creates engagement. And with that, I'll kick it to Mark for the next slide.
Thank you, Brian. So that was kind of the why and this is, I suppose, the, the what. So this is more of an in-depth description of what the options are and how they can earn that college credit. So again, you may be familiar, but we just wanted to give an overview of where, where we live and what our students have available to them. So first is the, the advanced placement or the AP. And just a reminder that this is an exam-based opportunity. It's offered at nearly all our high schools. And, and keep in mind that a student has to earn or score a three or better in order to earn any of the college credit. And then that can be transferred to a university and then their registrar will, will evaluate and decide how many credits in what area they get. So they do have to earn a three or better in a scale of one to five for the AP exam. The college and the high school, that's another model that we have. And you'll see some graphs later that this is an area for growth, I believe, we believe. And this would be a partnership with the university currently. We have a partnership with Eastern Washington and Central Washington, as well as University of Washington. And this is where our teachers and our classroom, as part of their regular day, teach a college-level course to our students. And the students, every day it's like a regular course and a regular coursework. They get the opportunity to enroll in the course, pay a reduced tuition. It's a state-set tuition with some variance based on registration costs. And at the conclusion of that, based on their grade, the grade they earn is the grade they get. So just like a college course. When we look at a graph and talk about our total participation in dual credit, I just wanted to point out that this is similar to ITech Prep. They don't have this model. This is actually the opposite. So students at ITech Prep actually take courses at Clark. RWU should be on that campus and then the district pays their tuition for them to take those courses. So they are in a college course with a college instructor, which is the opposite, which is college and the high school. That can be kind of confusing. The IB again is similar to AP where it's exam-based. The only place this is offered currently is at Columbia River High School, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. And again, on this test, they have to earn a four or better and a one to seven scale to get and earn that credit that can be transferred to a university of their choice. We also have Running Start available and I think those who are familiar with that, that is actually our students basically enrolling at our partner Clark College to take classes on their campus and they earn credit there. And then finally, Tech Prep is kind of the official name, but this would be the world that I live in is the CTE dual credit. So this is all our career and technical education courses that we align with like courses at partner community colleges. And in that case, students in most cases need to, you know, earn a B or better to earn that credit. But that's similar to the college and the high school. It's our instructors teaching college-level curriculum. That's in alignment with a college-level course. Students enroll and then they earn that credit. And the model in Washington currently, Tech Prep is no cost to students. Just that's, that's a legacy from Tech Prep, which was funded through some dollars a long time ago. And that continues to be the case now. So it's at no cost to students. Next slide, please. And this is just a real broad overview graph of where is Vancouver Public Schools. This is taken from the OSPI website based on student data that they collect from our student information system. So currently, the total attainment rate for dual credit in our district is 59.5. So nearly 60% of all our students earn some type of college credit. And then these are the buckets that they live in. We have AP. You can see that small one there is college and the high school. So again, very small bucket there. The IB is 4.2, Running Start, and then Tech Prep, which again is the CTE dual credit. And I just want to point out that I think in the next slide that Brian's going to talk about, the state average is right around 59%. But I think we'll all agree that we're not okay with that. So that's part of our discussion here is we want to raise that bar and we want to see that number grow. So with that, I think I'll turn it back over to Brian to take us to the next couple.
Yes. So this slide here, upon reflection, is probably a little hard for you to read. We can always send it out and make it a little easier for you to, to visualize. But if you have your glasses, this is dual credit attainment by race and ethnicity. Yeah, get a little closer there, Mark. And Mark and I, we believe strongly that our work preparing students for college and/or career is equity work also. So we are always paying attention to, to this type of data. And, and we wanted you to know that in this case, we're, we're paying attention to, to race and ethnicity and, and with respect to dual credit attainment. When you get a chance to look closely at this data, there is always work to be done. Certainly areas of, of, of growth and change. But we at present are mainly concerned about income and access to location of, of dual credit. So pay, paying attention to all things, but, but our focus right now is location and income access. And with that, I'll kick it to Mark for some closing, closing thoughts.
Next slide, please. Oh, there you go. And so back on that other slide, you don't have to go back there. But when Brian and I were discussing that and looking at, we're actually kind of proud of the fact that if you looked at that, there's not really a lot of disparities based on race and ethnicity. So I think we're well represented there. So that's, that's a kudos to us. But again, it's a different story if you look at access and you look at by income or by location. So again, that's why we wanted to focus there. So these are just kind of some, some brainstorm ideas. I know you're hearing that from the dual credit as well as us. We're dreamers and we want to just kind of bring some thoughts in front of you to look at, to help us ponder and maybe come up with some targeted intervention or some guidance on things to do. So as we talk about expanding, we do have some existing partners and we just like to find ways to invest and expand those. So for example, college and the high school, we do have contracts and memorandums of understanding with both Eastern Washington and Central Washington. At Eastern Washington, we're leaning into Fort Vancouver High School with a couple of English courses that Brian has actually successfully applied for and got a small grant from OSPI to help pay some tuition for our free and reduced lunch students. Because currently, we don't have a process to pay for any college and the high school courses for any of our students. So we have been leveraging an OSPI grant. Unfortunately, this year it, it got dwindled quite a bit. I think to the tune of from 70 last year to 20 this year. So we're trying to find other resources to help fill that gap to provide for our, our students on free and reduced lunch. But that being said, at Hudson's Bay currently, we don't have any college and the high school courses now. So that's an area of expansion that we would like to see happen. The other one might be IB. Again, this is just a wondering and I don't have an answer for this, but is there a way for IB to become remote? So we could offer Singleton IB courses for those that forecast for it at other high schools. I don't, I don't know that answer, but that's a wondering I have. And then similar to the ITech model at Hudson's Bay, who was right across the street from Clark, could we go into contract with them and offer the same thing? Similar to Running Start, but not quite, where the students at Bay might be able to cross the, cross fourth plane and take some courses live at, at Clark College with Clark College instructors. So those are some things that we're thinking. And, and as we look at that and we talk about budgets and we talk about how do we pay for things? I know Kyle, you brought up, you know, we need money. Okay. So where can you find it? So just kind of looking at and investigating some things currently, just so you know, and you may already know this. Last year, we spent nearly $120,000 to pay for all students who wanted to take an AP exam to, to take that exam. And what's interesting note about this is that the state already covers the cost of all students that are designated as free and reduced lunch. So really this $120,000 is geared towards our students, which is a good thing. But these are students and families that may have the means to pay for this anyway. So this didn't go towards our free and reduced lunch students. So is there a way we can leverage those funds? It's a question. We also, for the PSAT and SAT, this is great. And the district has kind of put a flag in the ground that said that we wanted to provide this for all students. And that's at the tune of more than $300,000 a year it costs us to coordinate and pay for that and make all that happen. And, and again, just another wondering with some of the universities not really using SAT as a leverage point for admitting some of the colleges. Is it, do we want to look at that? And then in this newly formed division that we have, the Career and College Readiness, we get to talk to our colleagues in Europe and Abbott and wondering if some of those funds might be able to be leveraged. I know that Nina, who's the Director of the Europe Grant, has actually asked OSPI, now could her funds help support some of her students in that program to pay for college and the high school? And we're waiting to get an answer back on that. So again, that's just some wonderings out there and some possibilities to, to give to you, to, to talk about and to maybe come back with some direction for us to, to get some more data or look at some other initiatives. Again, we're really trying to be thoughtful and mindful. And, and one of our charges with this new responsibility around this division, we think, is to really look at and investigate and support individual plans, right? So if we're really going to take heart, the high school and beyond plan, as we feel strongly about, it's really an individualized plan. So what does each student need to be successful in their pathway and their passion? And that might be IB and that might be AP and that might be an SAT. But we really want to make sure we're meeting the needs of our students and expanding opportunity for all to get those opportunities. Brian, did I miss anything?
No, you did a fantastic job. I'll just put a fine point on one thing you said. Our four-year colleges in the state of Washington announced formally that they are test optional. So it's not that they are discouraging, but they, they made a point. They are test optional as of this, this school year. So yeah, but yeah, thank you, Mark. And at this point, if there are any questions or comments, we, we're, we're here to listen and respond.
If I might ask, so how does the funding for Running Start fit in? Or does it not at all? Is it completely, I mean, because it's, well, it is kind of dual credit. But I'm just curious as to how that funding fits in. And it's interesting that the state would fund some Running Start, but not fund college in the classroom. That seems counterintuitive to me anyway.
Yeah, I can speak to that at a high level. That really is a passive funds for us. So students that enroll are in contract with Clark and Clark invoices us based on enrollment. And that money comes to our district, but then goes straight through, through an invoice to Clark College.
And they're not thinking of offering a similar thing for college in the classroom? I mean, it just seems like it's the same, same bucket. It would seem to me anyway. I'm just thinking it just, like I said, it's counterintuitive to me. If you're going to offer money for kids to take classes off of campus at a, at a college, why not offer money to let kids take classes in their building and not have to worry about transportation and access?
I think Kathy, the model that is current is that they're giving us that money through the FTA, FTE that's for the kids in our building right now. And when they leave our campus, then they're technically, we're not teaching them. And so the money, the FTE funding follows them. But that's the current model. And I think we're very fortunate that Mark is, maybe Mark, you could talk about some of the leadership at the state level around college in the classroom. Because you may have noticed that Washington State University wasn't listed, which seems crazy since they're right here. But they, they haven't necessarily engaged in that process yet. And it's been kind of uneven, I think. And Mark is on a task force to try to do some of the consistency. So Mark, if you could add a little about that?
Sure. Just at a broad level, the Student Achievement Council called a group together to make some policy recommendations. So we have representation from community colleges and some president's association as well as some K-12 and to tackle exactly these same issues. And these are the things we're bringing up. How do we find a way to increase access for all students to get some early college credit? And some of that is, the voice, some things I voiced is just that, that, you know, all of our college partners need to have the same system and same price. Because everyone seems to be a little different. So aligning those. And of course, the biggest thing is the funding model. And I know that our state superintendent feels that same way, that, that these are public debt dollars. And just like Running Start, maybe students should have access to these funds for their college to use however they want. Whether that might be through a Running Start or college in the high school or pay for their AP exam. So that work is starting to wrap up with some policy recommendations. But, but I think those questions, exactly like you're asking Kathy, are being brought forward and within challenge just later to fund those opportunities for kids.
Thanks.
I'll jump in. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I appreciate all the direction. And, and I, I really appreciate the alignment of college and career ready. Because I think what we're trying to do is graduate successful people into the world, whether they are going on to a two-year, four-year college, apprenticeship, a career. I, I appreciate that alignment and I think that fits better probably with the equity work we're doing. So I, I like that. I also like that you indicated that we are just hovering at average, but, but we don't think that's good enough. Because I would agree, there's probably a lot more opportunity. One question, and I'm, again, I'm going to say a question that I don't expect an answer to. But it's just something that I've always wondered because we're a large district with such a broad menu of options. So how do we present those options to make sure that there's access to all the students? And I, I just, I mean, that's always an, an ongoing opportunity, of course, of, and Mark, I know you were talking about meeting the individual needs of our students, but really how do we market all of these opportunities to make sure that our students are aware and can take advantage of them? You know, and I, I'm not saying that VPS is more of a concern. I'm just saying I think that that's a, that's a good challenge that we're going to have to continue working on, just because we have so many good options.
Yeah, a former supervisor of mine said that we should have guide rails, which I love because students still have options, but within some bumpers that they can't make, make mistakes and lose opportunities. So I'm, I'm agreeing with you. We want to create nice bumpers for students so that they are aware of their opportunities, have equal opportunities regardless of location or, or funding. But, but yeah, explaining those options is complex. I'm agreeing with you. And, and that's ongoing work we can talk about later. I'm glad you're thinking about it because it's something I think about a lot as a former high school counselor. Yeah.
Well, and it's even, I mean, bringing it down into the middle school students is they're starting to select classes and think towards high school and what they want their high school career to look like. Just how to present that forward-thinking, that halfway mindset, I think, just interesting conversation.
Oh, I was just going to say, I was going to just add on to what you said. If we wait until high school to discuss these options with kiddos, we, they're not necessarily going to be on the right path because they may not have taken a prerequisite that they needed at the middle school. You know, I, I only speak to IB because I know it so well. But if you don't have Algebra I before you come to high school, you can't do the IB program. It's a prerequisite and you need to know that in middle school, but you need to know that kind of when you start middle school because you need to have the math path forward from the beginning, from sixth grade. Like I'm gonna have, I'm gonna do algebra before I leave middle school. Then what do you have to do sixth grade? What do you have to do seventh grade before you get to eighth grade? So it, it really is having those conversations with the kiddos and the counselors, making sure the counselors know what are these, what are the requirements of these different paths? And so what would that mean for their choices here in middle school? And how do we set them up for success? How do we give them those bumpers, those guide rails now? Because it may be too late by the time, or they're, we'll be playing catch-up. Maybe not too late, but we'll definitely be playing catch-up and a lot of missed opportunity. And it seems crazy to think that, you know, 12-year-olds need to be thinking about it, but they at least need to be thinking about it.
So I just came up with a couple more questions for like our next conversation. So just like food for thought, because I'm, I, I really appreciated that you just aggregated the data. I think that's really helpful to look at when we look at any of our specialty programs. But, you know, and I, I'm not a believer that the graduation rate is the be-all, end-all metric. But I, I would be curious to understand how participation in dual credit opportunities impacts potential for graduation. Because I do have to see that if you're on a path and you're invested, that it might yield a higher tendency towards getting across the finish line. And then also, I would be interested, because graduation rate is not necessarily the only important metric, like because you work in those pathways, you know, what metric should we, should we be looking at to really measure our student's success? I mean, you know, I've thought through, is it checking in with them, what they're doing five years after? You know, what is the, what is the metric that we should be looking at from your expertise of how to measure student outcome? So again, that's food for thought next time we see you.
Very good, thank you.
Well, as you, as you know, the strategic planning process will be identifying metrics as part of that. So those are really important questions. And I think, as you can tell, Mark and Brian are doing a lot of thought about where we're currently at and presenting some opportunities to the board. And again, I just want to remind everyone that, you know, right now, we have a lot of different opportunities, which is great. Like, do we want to continue to offer a lot of different opportunities and choice? Do we want to move more towards some consistent? You know, so all that is, is a healthy tension. I mean, we're, we're very fortunate to have a, a school so close to Clark College campus and the opportunity that affords, a school on Washington State's campus and the opportunity that affords. But what other opportunities for schools that aren't logistically there? What does that look like? So it's a wonderful opportunity, and as you can tell, we're very fortunate. As, as the last present, presenters was Kristi and Lucy and their leadership. And then Mark and Brian have a ton of experience in this. And so we're grateful for their leadership and their presentation this evening. Are there any other final questions for tonight? And then, of course, as you're thinking about them, we, we definitely want your feedback and direction. Okay, well, we have one last item on the agenda, and as I said, it will be short. And I just have the one slide tonight. It's looking at our 14-day rolling rates. We continue to have, you know, a number of close contacts and quarantines that we're updating daily on the school sites and weekly on the district site. So still a lot of work. And, you know, really frustrating when, when parents and families are dealing with quarantine and staff are down because of quarantine situations. But also grateful that we're, our teams are doing the good contact tracing and keeping us, you know, open. So really appreciate that. Good news is that for the first time, we went into the 300s, so still in the high COVID activity level. But you can definitely see as, as the public health folks told us that they were hoping we were hitting a peak and, and starting to downward trend. As we move towards the winter months and opportunities to be outside are, are shrinking, we, you know, we just want to stay really mindful of our mitigation strategies and keep things moving forward. The central testing site is, is, continues to go great. Lots of people taking advantage of that opportunity. And we continue to add staff to our health room assistant positions as we recruit, try to get those in place. So that's all positive. I wish though it was even more accelerated. So still staff are really stretched thin to support the services that we're providing, from picking up on the bus to serving in the cafeteria, to serving in the classroom, to going home at night, and the activities through coaching and, and all that. So really just compliments to our staff for really being flexible and just kind of every day showing up and figuring out how do we make this work? So better news than normal, but still kind of unfortunately, the same theme of staff shortages, quarantines, and rates that we would like to see drop more quickly. There is news about the five to 11 vaccination, at least one level, I think the FDA approval tonight. And then that's going into the CDC. Want to make clear that there has been no, no indication from our state about requiring those vaccinations for students at this point. So I know some, some families have asked about that. So I just want to note that, that at the, at the state level, we have not heard anything about vaccination requirements for students. Of course, we did implement the vaccination requirement for staff, which took effect on October 18th. So I'm happy to answer any questions about our public health information tonight.
I'm curious if there's any conversation locally, like with CCPH, if there might be vaccination sites for students for five, the five to 11-year-olds? Just, I mean, back when, when many of us got vaccinated, there was drive-through and a lot more facilities.
At this point, they, they have not made that ask. When, when the first round of vaccinations back in January and February, there was a lot of just all across the county trying to figure out how to deploy. In, in the most recent conversations, they felt like the capacity was there within the structures that are already existing in the community. But certainly, if there's a need, like we did with testing for, for families, you know, we want to make it easy for families to get what they want in this pandemic. And so if there are options available, we would consider those, I think, based on the direction that you've given me previously around trying to partner with this and trying to make it accessible for families. And following the model of the free clinic and things that we are supporting as a district that we know make a difference for students and impact their learning, so.
Yeah, I think anything we can do to promote access is great.
So that's, that's all we have tonight. Appreciate, you know, your attention on these study session items. Excited to get the feedback from you. And I'm super proud of the staff we have here. I know it's, it's, it's a busy time and of course, everybody is doing other things, but you can tell the thoughtfulness that they're putting into this work and the passion that they have. We have the right leadership in place to lead these initiatives. It's just a matter of really understanding your priorities as a board and matching to our community's needs, and then deploying the resources accordingly, which sounds really simple in a 30-second soundbite at the end of a study session, but that's complicated, complex work. And we appreciate you leaning into it.
Well, I want to just, I'll give the other directors a chance, but the study session format has evolved over the last few months. And we used to kind of do a deep dive. We'd have one scheduled topic per month, occasionally we'd have two. And we know that there's so much going on right now, that even though it's now an hour and a half in, I think I really appreciate the ability to kind of work on multiple things and dive deep and have some thoughtful conversations on many things. So we're not, the work isn't chasing the cadence of the meetings, but instead the meetings are supporting the work. And I want to thank the whole team. It's nice to kind of interact and even if it's just on Zoom with more of the district team. So that's wonderful. Well, so on the 28th, which is Thursday, we have our Walnut Grove dedication. And then we have another one next Tuesday, which I think is King, if I'm correct. And then we have our regular business meeting on November night.
I think actually we're at Truman this week, Kyle, Walnut Grove, and maybe the first week in November, and that's our last one.
I saw a lot of shaking heads, so thank you for catching me. So Truman on Thursday, King on Tuesday, November 9th is our regular business meeting. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you, everyone.